We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. All right, commenting with questions, visitors, I do not see one in the audience. And students, any reports?
After the haunted house and the Veterans Day program that we set up, those worked both very well. And then, we haven't had a meeting in two weeks because there's nothing coming up right now. So, maybe a dance for Christmas.
Great, thanks. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve a consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn? Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate and say aye. Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Action items approval, paid to the Cold Spring Bakery.
I'll make a motion here that makes a payment to the bakery on the $427.06.
Motion by Jason, second. Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate and say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
And then, I'm saying the motion varies. A donation. We have a resolution for a donation. Talon Innovations donated to the elementary robotics group in the community education. Obviously, the robotics program, there's some high-dollar capital investments with the robotics pieces and computers. So, that's certainly a generous donation to help that program. But we do have to, we appreciate the donation by Talon. Is there anything else that you want to?
No, just a thank you to Talon Industries for their information. We lay these types of partnerships with the school and businesses in many areas and we can't wait long.
Great. So, this is a resolution, but it does not require a vote of vote. So, all those in favor to accept the donation? Oh, no, I'm sorry. We need a motion. Thank you. Make that fast. Motion by Lisa, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate and say aye. Aye. Opposed? The donation is accepted. So, with gratitude. Discussion items. We have the revised 2018-19 budget. This is something that we, is it, this is the time of year that we always sort of view the revised budget? Is that correct, Beth?
Generally, last year, we didn't do it at this time because we had contracts open, so we waited until they were done.
Okay. That's right. So, we have it now, though. And do you want to walk through the budget?
Sure. Do I get an hour instead of half an hour or not? Because that's how far I kind of schedule.
Wow.
No, you tell me to wrap it up when you need me to. Okay. So, I don't have the electronic copy open, so I'm not sure what page it's on. But this, the change in fund balance is the first page, estimated change in fund balance. I just do this one in first, because this is a nice snapshot of all the funds all together at once. And then, it breaks it down as we go through the different areas. So, I am just going to have mine up here in front of me, so I can see it. And you all are going to have to just look at this. So, um...
Page 112 is where we're at.
Page 112. Okay. So, then pages 113, 114, and 115 should be, and 116, should be the various fund breakdowns. I'm going to go through the other funds, and then we'll jump to the general fund at the end, because it has a lot more detail after these. So, the general fund is up there in blue, and we're just going to push it aside for now, and we'll come back to that one. So, in green is the food service fund. So, the updates that we have now are, revenues are updated to reflect our anticipated per meal reimbursement rate. So, the federal and state rates generally change every fall, and I don't know what they're going to be. So, in the original budget, we just go with last year's meal accounts and last year's reimbursement rates. And then, we update now based on what we know. So, we've got some increases there in lunch and breakfast. Most of that is because the federal rates increased. And then, on the expenditure side, we had put in the final budget for '17-18 that we were going to spend down fund balance with big equipment purchases. All the equipment didn't go in until this July. So, now, it's back in this '18-19 budget. You're going to see our change in fund balance is anticipated $133,000. About $110,000 of that is the equipment purchases, and the rest of it is operational. Our food service fund balance is actually over the limit that MDE says it should be at. So, we're going to continue to provide things like free breakfast. Look at ways we can improve the program and try to spend down that fund balance a little bit. So, that's where most of the increases are there. Are there any questions about food service in particular? Okay. Then, I'll go to the next page. Transportation is the yellow block. So, transportation, we split apart basically, so that we can see easier essentially what we're spending on it and the aid we're getting for it. So, what we get for transportation is state aid. We get some general transportation, that's called. We get some transportation sparsity, and then we get some non-public aid. So, we get some aid for all those non-public students that we're also transporting. So, our kids at St. Peter and Paul, and St. Boniface, and Holy Cross. So, we're going to see increases or some changes here in state aid. So, we had additional enrollment when we went from our preliminary estimates in June to where we're at right now with actual enrollment. So, those increases increased our state aid, but then it offset and made a decrease in the transportation sparsity. Everything's kind of interconnected when you get to those state aid calculations. So, then, what happens as the expenditures increase, then the transfer essentially that we take from the general fund to cover it goes up a little bit. So, when we report to the state, the transportation fund and the general fund and capital outlay is all one big pile for them, but we like to split it out, so we can see what's going on easier. So, on the expenditure side of it, expenditures are up about $62,000. About $50,000 of that is an additional route that we had to add for voids this year based on enrollment. There's the increased charge for out-of-district miles, because we're going a little bit farther out to pick up some of our open enrollment kills. And then, we add it into our contract that we get gas credits if prices get low enough. Well, prices have been going up, and so, we haven't been seeing them, so I took them all for now. Hopefully, we'll start seeing gas credits. Again, it's not huge. It generally was like $2,000 to $3,000 a month, but it adds up over here. So, hopefully, we'll see some of those, and the gas prices will stay lower. Any questions about transportation fund?
No, but I'm just going to comment for Lisa's benefit, so when she said, "Well, let's just let you make sure." Transportation fund used to be a separate fund, and it helped those of us outstate versus metro area. And at one point, they decided to roll it into general fund, so that when they put money into it, our costs are higher, and the metro areas are lower. But when they added money meant for transportation, they ended up with more in their general plans than we ended up with less. So, it benefits outstate schools to have transportation out of, separate. And, but it's a losing battle sometimes because the metro districts, of course. If you're one of them, they come off better.
Yeah.
It's a non-state versus metro issue.
I think that was probably before my time on the board.
Yeah, this happened. I mean, I know who was in the legislature at the time. Probably the late, I believe, 2000. It was the year when, you know, they were trying to figure out a way to get more money to the metro school districts.
Thank you.
Might as well take advantage.
Yeah. We're going to sign lots of others, so we'll let these start taking. Okay. Then, the next block there, the pink block, is our community ed fund. And there is a breakdown of the different revenue streams that are in community ed in our very last page, but we'll just quick talk about it in total. And so, community ed fund, our fees increased quite a bit here. Steph and I looked at the enrollment for the school readiness program, and then we looked at the expanded kid care program, so they added a second room this fall. And then, they were open for the summer. We were trying to get a better idea of where we're going to end up here with fees. So, that's the increase they are going to see there. No other increases in that behavior state aid on that fund. On the expenditure side, the administration costs, it, so it kind of looks like they went up, but what happened is we're charging less of an admin fee back to the preschool and the ECFE services. So, when you look at the last page where we have all of the fund balances split out, it'll be a little more clear what happened there. But essentially, what we do is we code all of, all the office administrative costs and community ed. And then, we just do a little charge back to the different programs that are also under that umbrella instead of trying to charge out as we go and all the coding that goes with that. Our youth and adult recreation enrichment went down a little bit. That's just us going through and trying to true up a little bit better how much we spend on the expenditures for those classes in recreation that we receive. Kid care is up because of that second room that was added in summer classes. Preschool and ECFE services are also up. We've got increased teacher and parent hours, and they do have an extra session from what we had in the preliminary budget, so they opened up another class. Adult basic ed, every year is a kind of a flow-through from St. Cloud. School districts, they host the revenue for us and then push it to us. So, it fluctuates based on what they have for enrollment in adult basic ed. And we always budget it to break even. And then, parochial health and textbooks is just a flow-through that we have to do for the non-public aid for our non-public schools that show up in Fund IV as well. So, the change in fund balance there is about a $25,000 drop. But when you look at, we look at the different fund balances later, you'll see kind of what's happening between those different programs. So, I would say we'll jump, we'll jump to community ed later, unless anyone has real specific questions about this piece of it. Okay. Move on. The next page, the blue, dark blue block is the capital outlay fund. So, on the revenue side, there is an increase in enrollment, which in turn affects our general education aid. And part of our general education aid is earmarked for operating capital. So, you're going to see an increase there in our operating capital aid. And then, long-term facilities maintenance is also tied to enrollment. So, you'll see an increase there as well. On the expenditure side of it, we've got an increase of $8,000 in curriculum. That is due to the enrollment increases. So, as we saw different grade levels increase, we had to buy curriculum and other items for them to serve those specific grades. So, instead of trying to budget across a bunch of buildings, all the purchases are put in curriculum, so that $8,000 covers that extra that we spent there. And then, under buildings and grounds and operations, there's an increase there of $33,000. Basically, what that is, is because that gen ed aid is earmarked for operating capital, I have to put it over here in Fund V. But really, all of that enrollment increase is tied to instructional increases. So, then, we have to move some of the expenses that you've seen the general fund over here into Fund V. So, they make me move the revenue, so I move some expenditures with it, basically, to help the general fund operations. Something else to note, the curriculum. They have $175,000 budgeted, and now it's up to $183,000. But the way the curriculum cycle works, they'll underspend that significantly. So, they should have at least, I would say, $100,000, probably $80,000 to $100,000 carryover of their fund balance to next year. And they'll keep doing that until they get to the year of the cycle where they buy math reading curriculum again, because math and reading is so expensive. So, I think, put me on this year.
Just five bucks to go to last year.
Yeah. We didn't, we just did math and reading, so we had a huge fund balance, and then we just depleted it all. Science, I want to say, and...
Science is now.
Science is now. Oh, industrial tech is coming up. Yeah. So, it's kind of a smaller year, so we should see we did underspending in capital outlay. But we put the budget there, so that we know not to spend it anywhere else, essentially.
Well, Lynn was industrial tech, now we're looking at science for next year.
Okay. Yeah. So, it should be up, definitely a smaller year. Any questions on capital outlay or the movement stuff around that'll make sense? Okay. And then, the orange is debt service. Really, there's no changes to this. It's just me and my OCD and wanting to use my numbers instead. So, there's a $5 change on their revenue. Yeah. It was that kind of a day, so I updated it. But we have a big building refunding bond that is getting refunded in February. So, we have about $23 million right now, sending out an investment fund. So, that investment will be used to pay off the debt, and then we won't have these crazy expenditures happening anymore. We'll be down to a normal $4 million or so a year. Any questions on debt service?
What's the bond refunding on?
The, it's the big building one. Yep. What was that?
We basically refinance.
Okay, you're going to have to...
Yeah. Yeah. And we had to do, it wasn't callable yet, so we had to do a thing where you put in an escrow, you wait for a while, and then you can pay it off now.
That's, this is the residual, and then it will be done.
Yep. Yep. Okay. The next page has the OPEB irrevocable trust on it. So, this is the trust that we have. So, we issued debt, gosh, this was probably 2011 or '12. It's way ago. We had, yeah, a quick little bubble in there where we could issue debt to help pay some of our severance. So, we have a debt issuance. The money got put into an irrevocable trust, and then every year, we grab some of the money out to help pay for those severance costs in the, in the general fund. So, I updated it to more accurately reflect what we're anticipating for retirements this year. That balance has about 1.3 million left in that trust. So, if we keep going at this rate, we've got, you know, five or six years probably left, depending on how much we, how much we crack.
How many people do we have left that gets severance? Because there was a...
Yep. There's a sunset in that teacher contract. There is about 30 teachers who, when they retire, will still be eligible to come on our insurance. And then, there's, I think there are probably a couple more than that that still get head severance payout, because they could choose whether they wanted to pay as you go right now, or we put it into a comp form, or wait until they retire on this base service and sick leave.
But eventually, those people will be all retiring and moving out.
Yeah, eventually. Yeah.
This saved us, though.
Yeah.
Having this.
Yeah. Yeah. It was a really big deal to help operationally. Yep. And then, they have, we do levy too. So, the levy kind of covers actual costs, and our OPEB trust covers the, not intangible, there's another word for it, but like the cost of having basically older people be on your insurance and drive up your cost. It's going to make me fancy too, if I can't think of the word. Not intangible. It's not intangible, but it's something... We'll look it up later, and I hope it'll better. No internet to help us. Yeah. Okay. So, there's all our, our funds. So, we'll move on to the general fund. So, the general fund has a lot more detail. So, it should be after that OPEB page with the grade. It should be back to the black and white with the general fund. So, this one has our revenues broken down, and then the expenditures are kind of broken down by building and departments in the building, and then we have some miscellaneous as well at the end. So, on the revenue side, to that increase of approximately $205,000 in state aid, almost all of that is tied to the 30E, and we got that is over our original enrollment projection. So, we had 2077, and we're at 2105 as our average at the moment. And it's almost all in elementary. So, we've got about 30 more elementary than we were expecting from the spring. Our middle school and high school, our secondary is pretty much right on what we were expecting. So, we're open on elementary. And categorical state aids, we're up about $110,000 there. That is due to the increase in special education aid. That aid is a year behind. So, our 16, 17 expenditures drive our '17-18 revenue, except for tuition billing, which is this fund process the state does, where they charge the non-residents that we serve out. They charge those resident districts, and then they turn around and charge us. So, most of our charges come from the St. Cloud School District for care and treatment that we've got. And then, the other part of it comes from Ben Stern, which is our early, like the birth to age two kind of special that they're serving. So, that tuition billing fluctuates so much. They keep changing it. You have to keep waiting for all districts to get their expenditures in. And St. Cloud is notoriously small and getting their staff out records out of the... So, it's usually November, December, and since that's where most of our expenditures come from, it takes a while. So, we'll know what our tuition billing is for '17-18 next February. It gets pretty close. We've got a couple more months, and then we'll know for '17-18. So, generally, what happens is you kind of underestimate what your revenue, you think your revenue is going to be, and then you get some carryover. So, some of there is like $70,000 or so carryover from last year that's in this budget right now that I'm expecting we will, we will get. But we'll see what happens when we hit the figure. Then, the other part is local revenues up about $67,000. That was taking a better look at interest revenue, reflect our current rates, not be quite so conservative on what we get. Changes in our P-card rebates, we switched to reusing for our P-card to get a better rebate on that to add to those revenues. We got a rebate from Ben Stern's. And then, I also increased our material resale. So, we've got a $50,000 chunk budget in revenue, and then the expenditure side increased the same, because it should be, and that, we shouldn't be making any money off of the kids' industrial tech projects. Any questions on the revenue department? Okay, expenditures. District-wide, big changes there that you're going to see is under operations maintenance. That one went down about $41,000. That would be because we are charging back more to Fund V. So, we're going to put more expenses over there, so that that capital revenue can take care of it. Severance, we decreased expenditures. That was updated to reflect our anticipated retirements. Right now, we don't have a lot of people who are indicating they're going to retire, and the ones that do don't have a really large severance balance. Workers comp and some of our other insurances, real estate taxes, were updated to better reflect actual results for this fall. Most of our insurance policies update 10 months, and I don't know where they're at for sure. And then, there's a permanent transfer out there for the transportation expenditures that went up. So, now, those expenses are increasing on this side. The next one, between Cold Spring, Rockville, and Richmond Elementary, you kind of have to look at them together, at least on the elementary services part of it. So, Cold Spring Elementary looks like it's going up about $98,000. But then, Richmond looks like it's going down about $16,000, and Rockville's going down $33,000. And that's all because of where our teachers moved over the summer. We had some of our grade level teachers move into intervention. Some went from intervention to grade level. Some switched from Cold Spring over to Richmond. I think we had one go, Rockville, to Cold Spring as well. So, when it all kind of shakes out, we, in essence, gained the 1.0 FTE that we added. We added one more grade level section this summer. So, that's what you're going to see there when you look at the three of them. The other piece of it is the special education increases. So, at Cold Spring Elementary, we have more day services, so that's the...
Damped FIA.
Damped FIA. Thank you. I couldn't have been more good for it. So, last year, we had more of that teacher services coded here in the middle school, and now more of them are even in elementary, so there was a change there. And then, our early childhood special education expenses, even though they're housed in a DEF building, when we report up to the state, it shows up under Cold Spring Elementary. All those students are considered part of Cold Spring. So, then, the expenses are also coded there. We've got increases there directly related to student needs. So, 0.5 parent, and 0.13 teacher. On the Rockville side, again, moving a teacher to intervention and then hiring a newer teacher decreases the cost a little bit there. And then, our special ed also decreased a little bit with a 0.25 parent decrease. And on the elementary side, again, we've got people moving around over the summer. And then, also, our special ed is going down, because the parent we originally budgeted with special ed is actually doing more health duties right now. So, she's coded in elementary services. So, that's kind of the, the big spiel on all of the elementary buildings. Is there any questions on any of those?
Let's just, overall, even though there's decreases in Rockville and Richmond, they've done to cover the Cold Spring Elementary increases.
No, because we added that 1.0 FTE in the summer. And then, the special ed is going to bump it up too. Does that make sense? Yeah. Yeah, because between the two of them, we're increasing about $130,000. So, if you got a 1.0 FTE, it'd be $75,000 to $100,000 for one teacher, depending on...
And the expense.
And the rest is special ed. Yep. Okay. And then, next, middle school and high school. Again, you kind of have to take them together. So, they've both been updated to correctly reflect the allocation of teacher time between middle school and high school, and the schedules that are in place now. In the middle school, we also reallocated a teacher to the access grade. So, access shows up in the miscellaneous programs down below. So, we're just essentially moving from one budget department to another. They moved some of that, that date time to the elementary buildings, but then that's offset by a 0.10 FTE. And then, high school, again, that allocation between teacher times, again, trying to allocate as much as we can to our assets and our title, all of our intervention programs. Our special ed is up a little bit, and that's mostly because of the estimate put in for our teacher. And then, health insurance choices again. A lot of our parent professionals are special education professionals. So, when they make different benefit choices, it really affects where our budgets end up under special ed. And our, all of those increased costs don't get factored into our revenue until next year. So, next year, we'll have a higher base for our revenue. So, we kind of have to eat it one year and try to recuperate the next year.
So, you really don't give rumors for all of our special ed costs? This just adds to the cross subsidy?
Yeah. It's about 60, yeah. It's about 60%. Yeah. So, in years like this, our cross subsidy looks really bad. We have a lot more gen ed and other revenue that has to cover special ed.
Special ed, I think I know that there's like a lot of people were, I'm not saying that, to get, to get, to get the dollars and to get credit for services that we're providing? Is there, are we efficient at, not efficient, but are we, are we getting all those dollars? Or do we miss dollars because of, I guess, administrative challenges?
As far as the, I mean, most of it is going to be personnel. And so, and we are, three times a year, we are required to do time and effort sheet. So, basically, I have a schedule of every teacher and every parent and how much time they put on special ed, and we maximize that coding. Everything we can code there, we do. For our one-to-one parents, if they're serving non-resident students, I make sure we've got that covered in there and that their resident districts are getting billed for that. On the supply side, I probably, I probably push it more than... There's some gray area on, on the supply budget and, you know, what's extra for special ed. And to me, if I need a resource room for a student, anything you need to go into a resource room is special ed extra, because if those were students in the gen ed population, we wouldn't need that room. So, I know sometimes other people don't look at it that way, but I feel like the state needs to know really how much we spend on it.
Here, we walked through, walked through administratively today to just about when kids do change their special settings or their disability code, how important it is to make sure we go through the process and give the data sheets right to our Marsh Secretaries, so that we get coded correctly, so that those dollars come to us, especially those kids who are non-residents. So, we walked through today administratively, again, the importance of that. So, we cannot not give every dollar that's counted to us on this. It's a good reminder for us to make sure we go back through, check our processes and procedures, so that it really does matter to that individual teacher has an IEP being, and their special setting changes, or the disability changes, that those make to the right people, because it makes a difference. Hope that answered the question.
Yes, it does. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I'll jump down to miscellaneous programs. This is just kind of the catch-all essentially for everything else we've got going on. So, activities is there. They do have a slight increase. They do have a slight increase. We added a voice swim head coach. There's some weight room equipment purchases that are in there, but those also are decreasing our assigned fund balance and not unassigned. So you'll see that, we'll pop back to the general fund and take a peek at that. You'll see that there. Part of it is an increase in admin benefits as well because our administration changed the type of contract they're on. So there's some more benefits in there. On special ed, it's about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase there. Transportation increases are, most of that, we have additional routes. We were having to do the spa and we have increased parent time based on student need as well. Under the academic structure slash titles slash AdSIS, that one is about, up about sixty five thousand. So that is how we are coding those teachers. So I maximize as much as we could our allocations to AdSIS and title. And instead of putting the extra essentially that's left over above and beyond that, back to the buildings, it's just an down here in this academic structure piece. So that's why you're seeing such an increase there. Targeted services is up about twenty five thousand. Generally, we just budget one ten on the revenue side, one ten on the expense side. Targeted services, by the way, would be our after-school programming and our summer programming. So we get aid based on those student enrollment in that piece too. So the purchase of instructional software, we have fund balance there that that is coming out of. And then Q comp, the increase reflects the performance pay. That's in the updated Q comp and we do have a fund balance for Q comp as well. So that also is spending down Q comp. So overall, our change in fund balance went from a deficit of sixty nine four to a deficit of one forty four, one twenty. So if you look, if you flip back to the very, very first page that has all the fund balances on it and take a look at what's happening in the general fund, we're spending down what's left in gifted and talented. Medical assistance is the third party revenue we get from, that insurance goes back through and bills the insurance companies for some of those like special ed services. We're providing things like speech and stuff can get filled back to insurance companies. So then we get some revenue back. So I am maximizing the amount of revenue we're taking from there to try to offset some of those big special ed increases we had this year. And we can't do that forever, but we've got a healthy fund balance sitting there. So that will help this year. Targeted services has a decrease of twenty five. Q comp for that alternative compensation. And then building activities is where we've got our, our fund balances sitting for specific items, donations, the weight room equipment purchases coming out of there. So that's where we're seeing some of those. And then overall, the unassigned balance, we're budgeting a deficit of about thirty two thousand. And I believe our original budget had a deficit of around fifty, I want to say. So the unassigned fund balance is going in a, in a better direction, even though overall the funding is not. That is the general fund we have. Are there any questions about it, comments, things we, that you're seeing? Do you want us to look at more?
So I appreciate Beth giving us this high love detail. This is her third time giving it. Her and I did this individually. She did it with the administrative team today and here tonight. So a lot of work, so thank you, Beth. It's helped me tremendously to see where we're at. As I told the team today, you know, this isn't doom and gloom. I mean, we look at twenty two million dollars, almost twenty three million dollars and it's only a hundred and forty thousand off. That's not bad, but it's a pain, but we just need to be careful.
So I was just going to say, I feel better that most of it is in the other funds and we've got very much as in.
Unassigned.
Some of those others, we do have to spend down at some point.
Unassigned is the meaningful fund balance. That's like your emergency fund on a personal standpoint. So that's to me, when you're looking at health, that's what I care about the most. And I think I must be, I mean, not that you don't care about the other ones as well, but that's where you're talking your emergency fund area. And so for that to be just shy of thirty three thousand, you know, what you do it is, is not, again, overall, a huge budget isn't as concerning. I think, you know, I'd rather be positive, but I'd rather be putting money back. I don't think that's fine, but.
The kids, students have needs, they need to be, they need, or students who lack.
You are in a kid business.
Yes.
And we knew this one, we don't care much of as well.
I appreciate the detail, the explanation that you've had. Because reading through the word packet, I just really appreciate the detail. Instead of just looking and then hearing it again as you present it, it just kind of gives that extra layer of understanding.
I agree. And I, I know that you've explained things before, but the way that you did it this, how you did it this way was very helpful.
Do you want to talk about the community ed fund?
Yeah.
We kind of glossed over it, but we can come back and dig deep. So it's still, I don't know what page it'll be on then. It's a really colorful nineteen. Okay, so this one is nicely color coded. So the green is our community ed reserve. So that's all of the, all of the recreation classes and enrichment classes we do, adults and youth, things like swimming lessons, all that fun stuff is in there. And then our preschool kid care is also under this program. So we kind of have it split out between community ed and then between our, the admin and then the recreation piece of it. So in total, why am I doing that in twenty five years? About sixteen thousand dollars in a profit expected for this year. So a lot of that has to do with that, the kid care program and expanding it. So that's been really helpful for that program and being able to take a look. And then Steph can take a look at how she's going to reinvest that piece of it as well.
Where, where, I'm sorry.
So in the green, so if you go all the way, it's like the second from the bottom line is the profit loss. So they net about a sixteen thousand dollar profit and a fifteen. There between the two. Do you see those two green columns?
Yeah.
Yep, and then the profit loss on the bottom.
The profit loss, it's, it's not calculated.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't add a, I should put a total on there yet. But it's, it's budgeted about a fifteen thousand dollar increase there. The unassigned fund balance is in the orange. Those are our, kind of more of our flow-through items. So the non-peropial aid that we get that we have to pass through to our non-public schools and our preschool screening is also in there. So that three and four-year-old screening that every kid has to do flows through that fund balance as well and we always budget for a break even.
The, the preschool screening is that, that's not broken out of this orange category?
No, but it's about eighty four hundred in revenue and expense every year. The reason we've got a negative fund balance there is from prior years building up of having a negative in that preschool screening. Because a lot of, you get, the state is kind of weird how they set it up. If you screen a three-year-old, you get ninety bucks. If you screen a four-year-old, they think it's eighty dollars. If you do a five-year-old, it's like thirty. And if you hit a kid when they're in kindergarten already, it's only ten dollars. So, and it costs, I mean, it takes a good hour and a half for the whole process and paperwork and everything. So it takes a lot of time.
So the incentive is.
The incentive is to try to get it early, but if we don't, there are no fault of our own. We kind of take a hit on it. So that's why this one is sitting at a small negative there.
But I was just more, I was more curious because now we've had, I don't know, five years or so since we've taken, taken on a screening. And I know initially there was startup costs, but.
And it could be that is what happened too. Because the past couple of years, when I looked at it, it's basically breaking even.
It's a small, it's a small piece, but.
Yeah.
I was just curious for curious.
Yeah, and Steph and I have had conversations with a teacher who kind of runs the preschool screening. So she knows about how much time she has to get through it and how much to allocate for a kid. So she's on top of it. The blue column is our E C F E, so early childhood family ed. So those are the classes that generally have a family component piece or a parent component piece. And if they're not the, the standard preschool classes that you would think of. All of our, the revenue there is tied to, the increases in gen ed also increase our early childhood family ed. So what's happening between our programs is E C F E is getting a lot of funding. School readiness is not getting as much. We're trying not to put too much of the burden on parents. So when you look at the bottom line in these two columns, the blue line and the yellow line, our blue line has a, we're projecting a loss of eleven five because we're trying to spend down fund balance. It's got a seventy one thousand dollar fund balance right now with expenditures of a hundred and thirty. And we don't need a fifty percent fund balance in E C F E. So the goal is to try to spend some of that down. And we buy as many supplies and papers, maybe fees and everything we can out of E C F E. But the fact of the matter is they're just not appropriately funded between the two programs. So school readiness this year, they added another class, chose not to increase the fees on the parents. And so we've seen a deficit right now of about twenty eight thousand. Steph and I talked about reallocating some of that, but we want it to be more clear that this is what's happening in this program. So we have to think about ways to, to help remedy this without putting it all on families and making everyone pay really high fees. So it's something Steph and I have definitely talked about a lot. And then the last column there in the pink is adult basic ed. Like I said, that one is basically a flow-through, so revenue and expenses are always budgeted to break even. I am not sure where we got an extra fund balance from, but I inherited it. So it's been sitting there for a while. But again, it's a small one, it kind of offsets on the sign that's negative, so. It's community ed in a nutshell.
School readiness is one where the legislature is fighting over doing scholarships versus giving out.
Yes, yeah, so they did a lot of scholarships, but it's not very helpful.
It doesn't for us.
It's more, it's more of a city. It impacts scholarships are beneficial to.
The metro, metro area. Yeah, for us, I'd much rather have them just allocate us some aid and we can figure out how best to serve our community versus them telling us what to do with it.
What, do you know what the dollarship, or the dollarship?
The word.
Yeah, what the, what the approximate dollar amount is on scholarships that we receive for.
We're at thirty seven five.
Okay, so we get.
For the pathway grant.
So we get about thirty seven?
Thirty seven thousand five hundred.
Okay.
We get in pathway grant.
Okay, and that goes directly to pay, that pays the tuition?
Yeah, yeah, so we have to pick specific, you have to allocate it to specific students in the system.
Okay.
Yeah, and request payment for them. Yeah, so it's a harder.
Is it a big process?
Steph did a lot of it. I open it up, I look at it and I say, yes, give me the money. So it's, that's all the hard part.
So that's about, that's about maybe eight percent of the overall budget for school readiness.
So you're looking at eight? Probably a little bit more if our total's two fifty nine seven. It's there under that other.
But we would benefit more if it was just regular state aid versus.
Yeah, because we would get a lot more in the revenue if we had.
And mostly, I'm sorry to do this to the simple students during the room, and I'm curious too, are there a lot of administrative costs associated with the scholarship piece? I mean, are you, are we spending a lot of our, our time, administrative time?
To do that?
To doing the work.
I don't know if it takes Steph or, I don't know if it takes her four or five hours or something. Maybe to figure out which kid, I mean, it's probably more, a lot more on the front side and then just the process of going in probably doesn't take as long. But it's going through all of the applications and figuring out the process for how you to be up those scholarships.
So Todd, instead of just like, here's the money you get because of your, the number of students you have in your district, we're having to do administrative.
Yes.
Work to get the money.
Is to qualify support.
And then doing the necessary paperwork to get that.
So districts always want the dollar, the dollars attached to it.
Yes.
Governor name pushed hard for the challenge and considering it's dollars away from the grants and just wasn't able to get it happen. So I'm sure, you know, if you looked at the, what I sent you all just from Governor Blackwall, it's on his priorities.
The, but the, I mean, it is nice to have that scholarship money, not that it's not. It's just.
We want the money, we just don't want it in the form of a scholarship.
Right.
Because if they would just give us general aid, we could use it for all the kids. Right now, you maybe have two or three kids and it's like basically designated, it's paying their fees, but it doesn't really help the other kids to reduce it overall, reduce it for everyone.
And we do have a sliding fee scale for tuition too. It's a.
It's a, I mean, like for early, for E C F E, for example, they say, here's the amount of money you get because this is how many kids you have, you know, it's a formula. So here's the money, but you have to have a scholarship program. So you have, or you have to have a sliding fee scale, like state statute requires it. So then you can, you can, so you can, you can say to schools, you have to scholarship, you have to do an income-based, you have to provide scholarships. You can say that, but you don't have to have all the paperwork associated with it. So E C F E is from a successful way to, to do that without having additional administrative costs. Is that, that's, you know.
And we're not even, I mean, we're not even coding any administrative costs to school readiness. If you look at the chargeback line, it's a fifth from the bottom. We're charging back to E C F E and a little bit to adult basic ed. We didn't even charge back to school readiness because they were already not looking great. So we didn't want to add, dig a bigger hole. But essentially, we're not putting any administrative costs in there.
Part of it with scholarships was in the city or especially in metro area where there are other preschool, school readiness options. This is not all going to the public system. It's being used for private.
Okay, well, that was the education and school readiness one.
Yeah.
So the, so this is just information tonight and we will be approving this next.
I don't know if anyone has any concerns or anything or more questions. You can email me because I can look into more stuff for you. I don't know. If you, if you figured out where I missed the money, that would be great.
Especially if you're.
Yeah, not the expenditure side, we're giving you any more expenses, but if you see revenue.
I think I've talked about this, there is one other exercise we're going to do that's going to, as she already pulled the last three or three years' actual budgets and we're going to see where we're understanding, what we're spending in different lines and what's going to do with how we're administrative, walk through on this and see, see what we're experiencing. Appreciate it. Willing has to ease this way, don't it? Go through this exercise.
I will share the burden.
Share the burden.
You know, that would be helpful at a board level, not to walk through each item, but as you do the work to really have either a work session or something to show the work and to know exactly what took place because referring back to like facility grounds last week. You know, there's, there's just different things that have gone well. So if you don't ask questions, that it always is a nice idea to take a look and see what questions are actually out there to have a fresh set of eyes on it. So even looking at that would be helpful, not to sit and get to do the work with you, but to see what results were detailed. I mean, do you guys?
No, yeah, no, that's good, that's good. We'll take that as.
I might watch that meeting.
Like one half time or two times.
Lisa, if you ever want our time, you can always come and we can. So, yeah, this is great. Yeah, very, very kind of set it. Thank you for all the diligence of the work you put into this because this is, you know, half of your year. I mean, it's probably an exaggeration, but this is an incredible amount of your time. So if there are less of the information, it's appreciated. Okay, so we can move on.
Thank you.
Unless, there's, there aren't any more questions, are there? Okay, perfect. We'll move on then, administrative reports. We have administrative reports. Is there, are there any questions? It's just Joel's report. Budget comparison report. This feels moot after the level of detail we just had, but anything you want to point out on that? Superintendent report.
I think my report on the enrollment is that we're hanging in there. This is the kind of the big next month and I have to see how many of our students stay around or how many students. And so we hope to be right in there because it's important.
And we, yeah, we've, we've done a really good job over the last couple of years of really holding our numbers steady, which is a good point that's all adopted. But it's just a testament to the work that's been done to keep kids in school. So. Now we have our board reports, right? Board and committee reports. Okay, Lisa.
Facility grounds report that's in the packet that you took a look at is actually the one from October thirtieth. And I had saved, but in email.
And I had saved, but in email, my notes from our meeting that we just had last week, so I can't really read through those unfortunately for you. But, um, when Brad, or I'm sorry, when Brent comes in to give his next update, there's just some changes that he's taking a look at as he's had time as our buildings and grounds director to say, you know, this is the way we've done things. Um, maybe this is as far as maybe supervising the custodial staff in different buildings. And just some things that he would like to take a look at a little bit further and catch the board up on where we've been and maybe what needs to change with that. Um, Stephanie was at, and I don't even have the agenda, so I'm like talking off my brain right now. But Stephanie was at the meeting and there has been some questions as far as some facility usage because she handles that, she schedules all that for us in the Richmond building. Um, and so we just directed her to use the policy. So our policy that covers buildings and facility usage is what she'll refer back to. And there might be a little bit of pushback from community members, just because a change is hard, but it is a policy. You guys have worked on the policy. We've approved it as a board. And so I think that kind of empowered her a little bit to be able to have that behind her as she works through that. I'm sorry, I know Beth and Brad, you were both in the meeting and I apologize that I skipped here.
Back, back to the facilities and grounds piece though, the, or no, the facility use piece. Part of it, you know, part of the policy and part of the conversations that have happened in facility grounds is really to make sure that we're consistent. Because if we're, if we're not consistent or if we're not following our policy, then it's, it's not fair. So that's, that's a big part of, I think, some of the conversations that we've had in facilities.
Definitely, that's the direction that we're, we're working toward and it just makes the person enforcing that take the pressure a little bit. It will be better overall, making sure our buildings are stacked. Anything else? But I know we had two pages and I had taken notes.
Yeah, there's stuff on the auditorium and then long-term facilities maintenance. That one always sticks out for me because I have homework to do. So we're working on long-term facilities maintenance and the different projects and whether or not we should bond a whole bunch of projects right now and get some of our, um, like the roof, HVAC at Richmond, like some of those, versus, versus trying to do a pay-as-you-go kind of house football, which is the plan right now, per payments, yes.
Yeah, so definitely make sure you looked at the October tenth notes and then in the next board packet, those, the notes should be in from our last.
I was, I was able to pull them up, so.
Oh, thank you.
Um, we talked about the long-term facility maintenance projects. Um, we did talk about the land that's for sale.
We still have first, refusal, it's still really high in price.
Yep, talked about the health and safety with, like, the water asbestos and the testing, all the different testings that we have to do for health and safety, like data, science, all that kind of stuff. And then we talked about how we're going to allocate the hiring process with the resume issue.
So we do meet again, I believe it's on the eighteenth of December. Um, and so the meetings, as Brent is getting them scheduled regularly, so you can all get them on our calendar. It's just really important to have those. The only.
Is the, is the gym, the high school gym sound system part of facilities and grounds?
It would be, yeah.
Okay. I know we've talked about this round and round, but it is still borderline. Like you cannot, every volleyball game that I, that I went to, I haven't been to basketball yet because I'm just starting, but you can't understand the announcer. And so it's, it's embarrassing as a parent and not as a board member to be sitting there and have this beautiful new gym and not be able to hear anything that's being said. And we paid a lot of money for that sound system, so we need to figure out something to get it working.
And are you taking notes? That goes back to our next meeting, or am I? Perfect.
Just did.
Thanks.
Awesome. Any other?
Um, technology, I was not at the last meeting. We'll be meeting again.
Um, for mine, Lisa reported on facilities and grounds and then booster club. I haven't made a tip of those recently. ECFE, I have made notes. Um, just, I don't know, the, the, it's always just an exciting meeting to go to because things are just going so well and what we're in. Um, enrollment is super high. I think we have about a hundred and seventy kids, which, between sort of threes and fours and fours and fives, which is huge to have kids. Um, the new software, LEO, for both the, um, community ed and learning readiness is, has been great. And it was interesting because, um, the advisory council had fifteen people on it, which you're on community ed, right? You were, we were in the past. You're on community ed. Well, those commi, those advisory committees are, get some people and that's like a huge number. So that was really exciting. It was a really engaged, active group of parents. So I think it has something to do with kind of the systems and the shoring of those systems and communication and some of that stuff, but guys, don't worry. But just kind of program updates on that. Um, and then my other ones have not met, or media did not meet in response to intervention. Friday morning's continuing to be difficult tonight, so I have to. Selene.
Um, it's tomorrow morning. I was not at last month's policy committee. We, we've, we've had, came through for that. And then teaching and learning, that was the world's best work presentation that happened right before the last board meeting.
Just to follow up on that, um, I believe we were going to approve that tonight under action and if you'd mark it on, um, which was not.
It's the timeline of approving that.
It has to be by the single fifteen.
Next meeting is the subject.
I will call in immediately, a two-day extension. But we did all the work and it just, I emailed you the PowerPoint, I believe. So I'll apologize right now that I did not fill any agenda for that. But we'll call in the tomorrow and we'll give the two-day extension. It will be approved on the seventeenth and it will be sent up. So it's all complete and settled.
Um, Shannon.
Um, yeah, if you read through Joel's notes, Minnesota State High School league, um, football, you know, we are the smallest of twenty-two teams in our district. And we now will be switching into a district with Delano, um, I think is a new one in there and then we'll play Purvis instead of Detroit Lakes. Um, but again, we're right on that border of whether we should be in TBA four A and so it's, it's probably better than that for these districts. We also, I believe there were, football for sure was the district champion GPA. And then there were two activities that had, uh, they were gold standard of excellence. I think it was tennis team and football. Um, and then Staffordville, and I think everybody gets those notes.
All right, Lynn.
Catastrophic lead, we did approve a catastrophic lead for kind of our teachers that did not get requirements and, um, when they had cancer and applied for, so that was approved. Curriculum committee, you do have the notes, but probably the big discussion going on in curriculum is to go back to teaching curso and make sure that we have curso handwriting taught throughout the system or reinforced throughout the system. And committee right now is pretty much all of the agreement needs speed, but I'm glad that Brad brought it up. It's like, this is something that not everybody, not all the rest of the staff is on board. And so we really need to make sure we've got all of the, um, the research on it and that we get everybody on board before we try and move forward to putting it back in and reinforcing it throughout the system. The research that has come to the committee all shows that there's so many benefits in teaching it. Um, even one of the members of the committee said, you know, she's had some new kids in her class that are dyslexic and they're so happy that they're doing curso because they can tell the difference between their Vs and their Vs and it helps them with their reading. And, um, there's a lot of other, um, brain research showing that there's benefits to teaching it. But the committee at this point has said, okay, we need to get that research and not just opinions and pull everything together and make a good decision based on the research and then take it to the staff and, you know, so everyone has an understanding why we're moving forward. And it is part of the, the new reading curriculum that they bought. So it's like, they just really need to be putting it back in or teaching what's part of the curriculum that they bought anyway.
So I guess two things nationally, do we know what is happening with curso? I mean, is it different from state to state? Is it different from?
That's, that's what we sent the committee, that's what we sent the committee back to. We can't just come with opinions and you think this is good or it's in their curriculum, so let's do it. Let's get their research. And we haven't had that meeting yet, follow-up on.
And then second, did we just, did we make a conscious decision years ago not to do it or did we just kind of stop doing it and, I mean, or was it something?
I don't think it was a conscious decision not to do it. I think it's just, it's not in third grade, but it's not reinforced as students move up through the grades. So even though, you know, they spend some time learning it as part of their, their language course or reading program, they don't use it again. So students don't have it reinforced as they move through the rest of their career there. About you, what's your experience?
I learned it, I went to Holy Cross. I learned it and I used it up to sixth grade there. I don't think I've ever used it that way.
So are, are all of our focus, I know, I know Simon just did.
They still do.
It is, but not as enforced as it probably was once before, is it?
Well, they learn it in third grade and then use it throughout, probably not as much as maybe they did many years ago, but they do use it through, from third grade through sixth grade.
Same principle, same.
Uh, yeah, I was throwing it in third grade.
And Parker's learning it at elementary elementary or third grade as well.
Yeah. So it's like everybody learns it, working in third grade, just then what happens.
Right, it sounds like your focus schools are somewhat using it through sixth grade or fifth grade and then you just kind of put it at the end of the list of things to do so it doesn't, you don't get to it exactly. I guess I'm trying to find out why we stopped. Do you want, I mean, did some teachers, because they felt it wasn't necessarily just, is it?
Once students have technology, you know, and you can hand in your, your essays and your reports using your computer, then the students don't have to handwrite essays. So anyway, that, that's.
It sounds like the curriculum committee is going through the proper work to investigate and move forward.
And people that are not on board, you're just talking about teachers that are actually in the classroom that are not part of the committee, you're saying that.
The, the committee has talked about it off and on for the last six months. So I think because of the conversations that have gone on in there, everyone is pretty committed. Yes, this makes sense. Yes, we should be reinforcing it through the curriculum. And it is built into the third grade. And evidently, there's some parts of it that are also continued in fourth and fifth grade because it is part of the modules that come with that language art curriculum. Um, but there are evidently some, at least from the discussion, that there are some teachers at the elementary level that aren't using it or reinforcing it. And then at the high school, there's just like nothing built into the curriculum. So that's why we felt. If we are to move forward with this, we have to have all the research and all the information because if you try and force this on, um, staff that maybe doesn't believe in teaching it, it's going to be a problem.
We just want to, we just want to make sure that it's a grassroots effort and it's not a top-down. So we want to make sure we have all the pieces in place and can do that and so that it's, it's ground swelled up rather than down. So it doesn't, you don't have that because it doesn't work, so.
Of course, as a community member on that, I've been saying as a business person, I do want students to know because I'm hiring people and we still write some, you know, we use computers, but a lot of things get written by hand. And I've got employees coming in that can't read, the older employees, curso handwriting.
Okay, and do you have any other reports on your other committees?
Um, I did not make it to the C E meeting.
Yeah, I didn't attend.
Right, so I know they were going to get some updates on the legislative, you know, voices and how that's going to impact, um, the legislative process this year. But we're a part of that.
Yep, okay. Jason?
Uh, I just had Ben Sterns, a couple of things that were included. So they had their de-process name, which they have sixty people attend and at the end of the series, we had zero people. So it sounds like they're made a very concerted amendment to effort to have them come here, to move with the staff here. So I'm not sure of the date that they.
Did we mean here?
No, no, it's always been in Sartell.
Okay, I thought you meant it was here and we had.
No, but they, because we have zero at Sartell again, we see it as, you know, that sort of pattern that we have. And so we've got to try and figure out something different.
It's a major issue at negotiations.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that if we're going to make an effort to bring it here, we better make sure that we've got people that are committed to attending it.
So this was on our administrative agenda today and we talked about it. And we are going to, you know, again, go with the approach that this is, this is a benefit. And that Ben Sterns is willing to reach out and say, we want to come to the quarry and we want, and that, and that way we can get the holding for it in the, um, Kimball, the kind of the west half side to kind of be here and then the east half side can be there. And so that we can get some more attendance to collaborate and work on their.
Yeah. Um, and then, let's see, what was the other? Oh, the other, I guess, important topic was the SEAC, the special advisory council. Uh, it's just a mix of families throughout the other districts and they really don't have much representation from the quarry. So if we can try to see if there's some families in the quarry that would be willing to be part of that council and represent that district, that would be great. So pass that along, otherwise.
So I explained that I did complete the, um, survey on the.
Oh, okay, yeah, alright. I haven't got a review of the, um, coming up, like a survey module.
Okay, um, is that everything for you? All right, and then obviously there's a bunch of notes, upcoming events. Explanatory upcoming events, any questions? So motion for Joe? Motion by Sammy? Second by Jason, any further discussion? Hearing none, always in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, who can see there.